Good evening. I'd like to call to order the June Martinsville City Public Schools School Board Meeting. Thank you for joining us, those that are here and those that are in town. At this time, we are going to have our Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Williamson and our invitation by Dr. Tally. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father bless you and thank you for another day. We thank you, God, for another school year ending. And also, God, a wonderful summer. And guys, we come tonight, we just pray we continue to touch those people across the country that have been touched and influenced by the well of God. Many who have lost their lives, and we feel so blessed to live in this great city. Also, God, I want you to remember our families, our employees who've lost family members, and those that are dealing with parents who are aging, and also people in their families sick. God, we know you're healing, and we know that you can give us the strength to endure for you, promise, to never put more on us than we could bear it. And now as we come, tonight is board to do the things that we need to do for our young people. We pray that they would have a safe summer, and that you would surround them with your love. Now, God bless this board, bless this great city, and God that everything done tonight might be done to your purpose and your will. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. All right. At this time, we need to approve the agenda for the meeting. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
That's true.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, registered speakers. Tally, do we have any here?
No, ma'am.
Moving to awards and recognitions. We were going to recognize one of our students from the high school, but she is out of town, so we're going to bump that to August. And we look forward to recognizing Rakaya at that time. We have another person we'd like to recognize. This evening marks the last meeting that our student school board representative, Anna Agee, will be with us. She's been with us since September 2024. The school board staff and students of the city schools, thank you for your dedication and excellence in education in your service to our community, Anne. And we are so excited that she's going to be attending Virginia Tech. Go Hokeys! She needs to learn that cheer. Let's go Hokeys! And where she plans to study civil engineering. We would like for everybody to come up and get a photo. We have a gift and a plaque that we'd like to present to you.
You're welcome. Thank you so much.
And of course, you know, it's got to have a theme, so everything, and what a good theme it's writing this article on. Of course, it's all about being a Hokey, so thank you for your time and service with us. I think that's your phone, though.
Which one? Oh, yeah. Anna, can you switch your phone?
Yes.
One, two, three.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for all your service. All right, next we have, under our information agenda, the pre-summer meals program. And Ms. Williams will come up and share that information with us.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, again, this summer, we are participating in the summer feeding program, also known as the summer nutrition program. Summer nutrition programs for kids. We are providing breakfast and lunch for any child 18 and under. And we provided lunch during the summer learning programs that have now closed, but we are continuing to serve meals. And our open site this year is Albert Harris Elementary School. And we're offering breakfast and lunch Monday through Thursday. With the exception of this Thursday, we're closed in honor of the fort. And we are providing meals to Boys and Girls Clubs, Anchor Students, Piedmont United Family Services, and we're doing meals again this year for the back-to-school programs that will be held in July and the first of August. Our breakfast time is 8:30 to 9:00, and our lunch time is 11:45 to 12:15, Monday through Thursday. And we'll offer those meals until July 17.
Well, thank you very much.
And it's free of charge, but the meals have to be consumed on-site.
Consume on-site.
Consume on-site, yes.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do for the children.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, consent agenda. We need a motion to approve the minutes from the May 19 meeting, the financial report that ends June 30th. What's this, what does this mean? The June meeting. Sorry, I read that wrong. All right, may I have a motion to approve the minutes and the financial report?
I see.
Okay. All in favor? All right. Next, the Virginia School Board Policy Service Contract. And Dr. Tally, you have that to present to us.
This time, of course, we want to always stay connected to Virginia School Board. We get our policies from there, there's legal protection there. And of course, we've always been a member. So I'd like for the board to be accepting agreement to be a part of this so that we can continue to streamline our policies, get the protections of new legislation that's coming down, and stay informed, which is just very critical for us.
Any questions or discussion for Dr. Tally about this?
And keep in mind, we can also call in any questions that we have and get a representative, and that is also critical to learning what's going on across the state and the nation.
Any comments? One thing I was going to say, that is where we get our policies and how we do the updates. Any updates we've made, any policies we've done, they come from there. And sometimes we're just trying to get caught up because there's so many, and other places are changing them a little faster sometimes, so we're trying to keep caught up. All right, then may I have a motion that we continue the service contract with Virginia School Board Association?
I see.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Appointment of Superintendent Desi- Yes.
Sorry, Claire, the board just answered on the fast.
Oh, I sure did. I just rolled right on you.
I was trying to conserve favor and make the call from here in the process of my apologies.
And I appreciate that, but you know, I'm on here just, okay. So that one, we just finished 6.4.
Yes, ma'am.
So let me grab over here and get 6.5, and then we'll look back. I don't have a 6.7.
See, you got one. Textbook.
No, no, I didn't get a one, and I didn't get a two.
It's on the sheet that says information agenda. Flip it over.
It's just like, oh, okay, I missed one, two, and three. I jumped straight to four. What sheet? Angelie, you were thinking it was a winner-winner chicken dinner.
I was going to keep my head down.
Because the first three were all you, honey. I'm sorry. I just rolled right on. And now I can't even find where that is. Angelie, would you come and help me? You've got textbook adoption first. I'll do that.
I do. I'll start with math. This year, we have to adopt math textbooks for K through 12, and then, I know. This is a duty. I only brought one of them, but the rest are in the gym next door if you want to look at all of these books.
Sure.
And then we have to adopt for English Language Arts for grade six through eight. So we'll start with the math. Actually, the Code of Virginia requires that we do full implementation for the 26, 27 school year. But we want to head through the adoption process, we can adopt and start purchasing the material for teachers to kind of get used to them before they're required to fully implement. So this will be like a crosswalk here for us. Elementary, we had teachers, administrators, division-level staff, or a few, all of the textbooks using rubrics from VDOE. And plus, in addition, we added some things that we wanted to look at, like alignment. Some of the main concepts would be to grade level to see how they were covered. Elementary has selected Kidham for K through 5. It comes in digital and print. The teachers have requested the print manuals, print student books, as well as the digital, so that's what we'll do. And so we will purchase those to begin implementation this coming year. Secondary, middle school, and, and of course, selected Math Space, which, it comes thankfully in digital as well as print, so we don't want students having to carry these around all the time because that's very heavy. Yes. The feedback from the teachers at secondary level has been that they really want the digital. They're not concerned about having the hard copy. So I try to do what the teachers request, and then we can adjust along the way if they find something's not working for them. So those are the Math textbooks up for adoption. These are all from the approved state textbook list. So we stuck with that list and reviewed all of the ones, and this is what they selected.
And all of us, do you still have access to technology?
Yes, yes. We are one-to-one, division-wide, plus some, we're putting some extra laptops in the schools in case someone has a damage or something like that. So are you getting individual student texts or class sets? We're going to start out with class sets, and they have the digital, but we'll see where it goes from there, how it works. And like I said, full implementation is 26, 27. So the teachers just wanted a year to get used to it and look at how they fit with the new standards. As you know, no textbook is fully aligned to the Virginia standards. We're not one of the larger states, so they put in little charts to tell you how they align, but the teachers were going through checking the alignment. So this year, that's part of what they're going to do, is note what's aligned and what's not really aligned, and also note what resources we need to supplement to make sure everything we do is fully aligned.
And hopefully, within the time that they can.
The requisitions are ready to go tomorrow. I didn't want to submit them until we had approval of the adoption.
All right, do you want us to approve them one at a time, do the math and do the English?
Yes. Or I can go, whichever way. I bet that even if I can present those now, if you would like me to as well.
Sir. We'll just roll those together and do that.
Okay. These are the six through eight English textbooks. And actually, these are consumables, so students write in these, which I thought was interesting. Yes, and they also, again, are available digital. So we will be getting the student consumable copy and also the digital copies for them to have. So each student, each student will have one of these. These are H&amp;H literature.
Those are contemporary?
Yes, so it's got contemporary, it's got some classics. The teachers went through and looked at all the different texts that were involved. It's got nonfiction, fiction, all the different types to align with the standards. And as I said, these were also, it's got a classic, "Thank You, Ma'am" by Langston Hughes. So it's a nice blend of literature. And I'll be glad to pass these along if you'd like to look at through them.
Actually, I'm sure Kathy will flip to the math, and I'll probably flip to the.
Okay, I'll put these to the side so anytime you would like, or if you'd like to take them and then return them, you're welcome to.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the Math and Textbooks as well as the English Textbooks?
I see.
All in favor? Now moving on to the Elementary Secondary Education Act, consolidated application.
Yes, so this is for our titles one, two, four, and five. Title one being the largest grant. These are approximations, these numbers. We don't receive our final allocation until the school year starts. In fact, since I submitted this, our Title I funds have, that projected allocation has increased. So our total amount of funding right now for the S E A, not including Title III, is almost at 1.9 million for all of the titles together. Approximately 95% of that is used in payroll. We have classroom, class size reduction teachers in Title I. In Title II, we have recruitment and retention incentives for harder staff. In Title V, we have recruitment and retention incentives for harder staff positions. Also, our STEM program at the elementary schools, that is Title I funded. The Performing Arts Academy, that is Title IV funded. And then now the robotics program at the high school will also be Title IV funded.
All right, so may I have a motion that we approve the application for Dr. Downing to submit for the E S E A?
I see.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now Title III has a separate information.
Yes, Title III is usually handled by Dr. Ball, because she's over at E L program, and this is focused on our English learner program. So she's broken out. We get approximately $13,000 each year for that. $12,680 will be used for student support and academic enrichment. And then $1,202.96 we use for supporting effective instruction and family outreach. We have a liaison for this community of families that is funded through Title III, and that has been very, very successful. It's someone, one of our teachers that they know, they feel very comfortable with. She is bilingual. And so that's an important part of that programming, is making sure our families are communicated in a way they understand and in a way that they're comfortable.
All right, any questions for Dr. Downey? All right, may I have a motion that we approve the application for Title III?
I see.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Sorry that I missed you there. We don't have to do that anymore. That was part of the policy, so we don't have to. Yeah, when they've been doing that in other systems, they don't have to. All right, now we're on to 6.5, Appointment of Superintendent Designated. So I need a motion to approve Dr. Downing, Dr. Tarpley, and Mr. Clemmons and Superintendent Designated needs for the school year 2025, 26.
I see.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next, 6.6, Authorization for Superintendent to Assign Personnel. And we need a motion to grant the authority to assign personnel for the 2025, 2026 school year to section 22.1-297 of the Code of Virginia.
I see.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, 6.7, Virginia Public School Authority Resolution presented by Ms. Heinz. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I am here for the board's ask for approval for our district to be reimbursed starting July 1st, 2025 for the following. Classroom multimedia network computers, internet-ready local area network capability, assure adequate high-speed, high-band with capability, instructional software, and handheld devices for our district. So we are asking to be approved to be reimbursed for those items during the 25, 26 school year.
All right, may I have a motion that we approve the BPSA resolution? And Ms. Heinz just presented. Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving to 6.8, Resolution with Dr. Virginia Sajic and his group of self-insurance support. Whoa, that was mouth.
Yes. We do a bid process every five years for our liability insurance and what is compensation package. This is the first time we've made a change, or we're making a change. And that's why you haven't had me come before you before to request that you sign the document. Basically have two companies that compete for this each time. It's Virginia Municipal League, B M L, and Bay Corps. And Bay Corps won the bid this year significantly. And they usually come in almost neck and neck, so we haven't, it hasn't necessitated a change because, you know, we were happy with B M L as well. But this year, for approximately $50,000 change, we will make the change. I think they've become a very large pool over the last few years, so they can get much better pricing for us. And so that was significant, and we needed it to help balance the budget this year as well. This is a formal document to adopt a resolution to move forward with Bay Corps.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the resolution to move on with Bay Corps? Is that how you say it?
I see.
Second. Any discussion or questions for Mr. Collins? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. 6.9, this is starting our policy updates. Tally's going to walk us through nine, 10, all those part here.
Nine through 1,270. I'm going to do my best, and I will just say that all the policy updates are in the manila folders in front of you. Of course, they're also attached to the agenda that we sent out, so hopefully you've had a chance to take a look. If you have any questions, please don't direct them to me because I will not be able to answer them. So first up, and I hope that I'm going in the same order as what's on your agenda, if not, please let me know. First up is Policy EB, that's School Crisis Emergency Management and Medical Emergency Response Plan. Oh, first, I'm sorry. I'm supposed to give a prelude that Carrie wrote. The spirit of these updates is to comply with the new updates to the Virginia Codes made by the General Assembly in 2025. Getting these policy updates in place now will allow our central office team to ensure they're ready to roll out this fall. And of course, with the policies, everything that's underlined are the updates as you're flipping through and following along. Now, EB, School Crisis Emergency Management and Medical Emergency Response Plan. There are some small changes to the crisis plan audits and contingency plans, like adding AEDs. It adds a detailed athletic emergency action plan and cardiac emergency arrest plan. And so tonight, you can adopt the policy, and then at our next school board meeting, we can have regulations to attach, one for the sports plan and one for the cardiac emergency plan.
All right. Any questions? I know that you've had an opportunity to look these over ahead of time. Any questions that Tally may be able to share?
TJ's in the room, so.
Well, TJ. All right, then may I have a motion to approve the update to EB, School Crisis Emergency Management and Medical Emergency Response Plan?
I see.
All in favor? Okay, 610.
Is that EBVA, Emergency First Aid CPR and AED?
Yes.
All right, so that just adds language, language about acaritic plan, the cardiac emergency plan, the bleeding control plan, and opioid antagonists, like giving Markan for a fentanyl overdose.
Any questions about that? All right, may I have a motion to approve EBVA, Emergency First Aid CPR AED Certified Personnel?
I see.
Second. All in favor?
All right, moving on then, I think, to EBBC, opioid antagonists. This is a brand-new policy relating to opioid antagonists, talking about schools keeping them on hand and training staff in their administration.
Questions, comments? Other than Mr. Williamson just saying that was a good thing?
Yeah.
All right, then may I have a motion to approve EBBC?
I see.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Policy update EBCB safety drills.
Yes, ma'am. And this one adds a sudden cardiac arrest drill to each school.
Really?
And among the other drills that we have.
How is that going to work, TJ? Say your thing.
You know, right at this point, I don't know. I just found out about this one. I've been on vacation, just got back today, and so I just found out about it. So I'm looking to have something in place. It's very, yeah, it's very.
All right, well, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I just, since it was different, I thought. Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, any questions? All right, may I have a motion to approve EBCB safety drills? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, 16, 6.13 GCE.
Substitute teachers, yes. For long-term substitutes, the division will now need to write a mentoring and coaching plan that leads to possible licensure for long-term subs.
That's great.
I think so.
Okay. Any questions? All right, may I have a motion to approve GCE?
I see.
All in favor? All right, GCL.
All right, this is professional staff development. This policy update adds professional development in a few different areas. Science-based reading research for elementary and middle school, implementing IEPs for special education staff, instructional practices to support inclusion for teachers and principals, and supporting students with autism spectrum disorders.
Questions? And may I have a motion to approve GCL? All in favor? All right, IGVA.
This policy deals with programs for students with disabilities. The update will add post-secondary information to students who are transferring from high school to an institution of higher learning. It adds considerations to any accommodations needed for emergency evacuations. It asks us to post on the website an adult who handles parent concerns about special education, which we already do have, do have in place on the website, and adds notifying parents about dual enrollment courses during an IEP meeting for a student in 11th through 12th grade.
Questions, concerns? All right, may I have a motion to approve IGVA?
I see.
Second. All in favor? All right, JFCN.
This deals with cellphone and smart device possession and use. And of course, it's already something we're practicing here at Martinsville City Schools, but we're just kind of formalizing it. This is a brand-new policy to support the governor's order last year on no cellphones during school. Devices are allowed on campus but must remain put away from bell to bell from the start to the end of the school day.
Basically, that's what our policy is now.
Exactly.
We're just ahead of the game. All right, may I have a motion to approve JFCN?
I see.
All in favor? All right, JJAG.
Especially relevant right now when you go outside and you're in an oven. This is a student athlete extreme heat safety and protection policy. It's a brand-new policy that's specific to heat-related safety and protection of our student athletes. The additional procedures that it mentions will be covered in a regulation that we're going to attach next meeting. Carrie is working with Dr. Dixon and Amber Corns on creating a regulation for us.
Questions? Are band students considered athletes? I don't think so.
They certainly should be.
I think they are, so I guess I would say yes.
Yeah. Yes.
All right, may I have a motion to approve J J A G?
I assume.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, K G D.
And this is a policy related to notification of school-connected student overdoses. It's a new policy that mandates the notification process if a student has a drug overdose during school hours or while participating in a school activity.
Questions? All right, may I get a motion for K G D?
I assume.
All in favor? All right, thank you, that's a lot, I appreciate it. Dr. Howie, superintendent support.
Thanks, thank you. We did several things towards the end of school as we closed. Of course, governing school, which went well, and there's some changes there. I think we've both kind of updated on those. In fact, those last week we had some emails about some changes there. We'll update everybody another day, given school as we go. Great transition ceremonies at the Albert Harrison Baptist Academy in the North School. A well-attended, parents were very complimentary. Administrators did a great job, and they were just packed, a lot of tears. And looking forward to each class moving on to their perspective school. But I wanted to certainly appreciate the administrators and the teachers for doing such a great job, just a memorable ceremony. Highlighted to a lot of the accolades that our kids have received. I was very impressed with that. At Region Six Superintendent's meeting, which is changing, I think we'll have about four retirements. So we'll have about four new superintendents to Region Six. And I was still service coach at that. Last day of school went fine, you always worry, because it's the last day of school. And I want to thank the staff and our people from Central who went over to respective buildings as we do on early release, as well as Police Department and others who assisted in that. It was just outstanding and so, so smooth. It was actually scary, all of us got in and kids got on site, and that's very important. The Clearview Parade, those who went, that was outstanding. My challenge again to everyone, I have two challenges. One is after prom and prom. And the second one is to walk the hill from refuge up to Clearview. And some people took the chicken way out of the ride, but I'm not gonna call people out. I'm not playing. Every year I take that challenge and see which teachers or administrators or board members wanna walk that hill, because that's a challenge. But as a former track coach, it's all good, so it's all good. But outstanding parade, outstanding parade and gifts and plenty of cheers. And the young people were proud of their accomplishment, so we were proud. You know, end of year culmination of things, just great job to Clearview and Ms. Williams and her staff. Graduation, I want to thank all of you for participating in that, it was just very successful. It was our first variety, and we didn't know how it was gonna turn out outside of, you could always tell the next day of the rain. But I want to thank our Browns crew, they were there day early. And, you know, we were concerned about staying. Those of you who went down after the wonderful fellowship we had on Thanksgivings and her people for that. But some of us went down that day early and just looked at the Browns, and everything was just perfect. We worked very well, and we were very successful. Do not like limiting students to attendance. You have people who come from out of town, and having it outside, you can have as many students. Can have as many relatives come as possible, so it was just outstanding. And congratulate Dr. Dixon and staff for that. Curriculum week, we held that immediately after graduation. I want to thank Dr. Downing and the staff, the teachers, the room, the C L C was packed. A lot of the teachers participated in that. And to get a head start and jumpstart on that too. Again, the big M ceremonies, all of those were great. I was, it was good, I think it was a good plan again to have the trophy winners first. Went very well. Superintendent's practice again went very well. It's good to have our online brother Luis Romero, who did an outstanding job talking to the young people about future. The Haver Conference in Tampa was very, very good, very good and very well-attended. We had a great time. And just took a couple of notes here, as I like to. And the big scene thing on, every time we go to these conferences, we find that so many things we're doing, such as breaking down barriers and making sure that all students, not just gifted, and your former gifted teacher yourself, but all students have access to the curriculum. Because you just don't know if I'm adopting the rub, students get not identified or can actually have a work ethic to do the work. So Dr. Downing and I attended the administrative session, which talked about advocating for all students through district planning, hiring teachers who will be willing to identify the greatness and the talent of the students. And that, because every student deserves the opportunity to increase that learning. But a lot, a lot of things that we brought back, a lot of things we're already doing, insisting upon the rigor of what we, what we're teaching. And then finally, today we met with all the new administrative teams, which will take place tomorrow, July first, and had great meetings at each school with the principals, staff, lead teachers, and others who will be involved. And we're all too excited to start. I like the chemistry, I like the coming together. And there's gonna be a great, great, great focus on instruction this year as never before. And so we're very pleased with the progress from last year. Considering the fact we have new standards, and considering the fact that V D O E has not established quite founded yet what the bar is going to be. And here we are going into July, but it's okay. We feel like our students have done well, and we are very pleased by teachers. If you teach at Martinsville, and I'll say it, I continue to say it, in our school division, our people are so sought after and so professional and prepared. You can teach anywhere, and they've proven that over and over again. I have poverty, I have minority, I E L L, high special ed population, but it's still excelling standardized tests. It's just incredible what teachers can do. We have a great staff, thank you.
All right, now it's from the board. Anne, do you have anything you'd like to share with us?
Well, I'm enjoyed by time saving on the board, that's all I have to add really.
Well, thank you, we appreciate it. Ms. Kathy? Ms. Blackwell? Mr. Williamson? Mr. Jones? Okay, I would just like to say, I did think graduation moving it to Friday night. I know either way, whether we're Friday or Saturday, is going to interrupt. You know, we are a small community, and so we're gonna have a night or time that one of the county schools also has graduation. But it was, I think, the parents seemed to enjoy it. I think it allowed our teachers and everyone to have an extra time, you know, to start enjoying their weekend and their time off. So I thought it was very well, but we did a great job, Dr. Dixon having everything. And it was really very nice. At the beginning of the hour, Dr. Howie mentioned that we had a lot of folks pass away. We've had several pass away that were former educators. Also, folks that contributed a lot to our school system over the years. I'd like to just say that we would like to extend our sympathies to the L D Oaks family, as Mr. Oaks gave thirty, forty, fifty years of service in the Martinsville Athletic Boosters, and was very dedicated to that. I'd also like to mention Terry Mitchell passed away. He used to volunteer with our after-school gifted art program. Just like Dr. Howie said, students can be gifted in many things. And we found a lot of folks that were gifted in art, and we didn't have a way to accommodate that during the day. And for about eight to ten years, we had an after-school art program. And they got to work on art many different, many different avenues. And he worked with them with wood turning and shared some of that with them. So we'd like to extend our condolences to his family. Reminder of dates, the schools and offices will be closed on Fridays in the summer. July third and fourth will be the Fourth of July holiday that we will observe. So it's a three-day week for our folks. We tentatively had a school board meeting scheduled for the fourteenth of July. We will not be meeting that evening. I think we were able to get all the policies this evening, and so that kind of gets us back up to where we need to be so that when we get together in August, we'll be ready to hold and do the new things for the new school year. August seventh is our open house at all the schools. I believe the hours are twelve to seven, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And we look forward to seeing all of our precious folks then. Convocation is on Friday, August eighth. Do we have a speaker yet?
We do.
Okay, would you like to share, Dr. Downing? Or am I putting you too much on the spot? I don't know. I throw stuff earlier, let me do this. Is it time saver?
Not. Actually, we're very excited to have Dr. Ken Carter. I don't know if you've seen the movie Coach Carter?
Yes.
He's the basketball coach from Richmond, California. He will be our speaker.
That is exciting.
That's very exciting. We received some additional funds through title one that we were able to use to get him here. By the time she was working her magic on that phone, and she got him.
Well, awesome, good job, everybody did that, that's a good one. That's exciting. So our first day of school is Tuesday, August twelfth. If we hold to our standards of what we've done before, then we would have a school board meeting on August the eleventh. So even though we don't set for the next school year to them, let's, we'll go ahead and add that to our date list, that we will have our first school board meeting for the new school year, August eleventh, Monday, August eleventh. And we will be here for that meeting at six o'clock. All right? Any unregistered speakers? See if I can get these papers back on.
I'll stay.
No, you're fine, any communications? Okay. I'm sure she'll say. Yes, sir, another thing, sorry.
Yes. We had a death last week. One of our teachers from, well, her son passed away last week. Dead woman. She's one of the teachers at Clearview. Her son passed away in Georgia last week. So we wanna try and keep praying our prayers. And that's all.
I want to thank you, and I want to thank the staff who already reached out to Ms. Milton to thank you, Ms. Williamson, for giving us a note. And I'm also happy for the first anniversary.
All right, then we are gonna move to closed session. Read us there.
Pursuant to section two point two, thirty-seven eleven A of the Code of Virginia, I move that the board convene to close session for the purpose of discussing the following specific matters. Discussion and consideration of evaluation, employment, assignment, and reassignment of employees of the Martinsville City Schools as authorized by section two point two, there's three seven one one A one of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
All right, so a second. And then we need to call.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Blackwell? Ms. Carter? Mr. Jones?
We're going to for the session, have a nice summer, folks, see you in a while. Good night.